Can you hear me now?
I can.
Okay.
Is all of us present?
Please, just say yes or no.
You say yes, you say nothing, there's still business. Is counsel with us?
Yes.
Yeah.
One more, Mrs. Owen?
Yes.
Okay. We are now in open session and we've just come out of executive session for the purposes of discussing some personnel matters specifically about the powers and duties of the governing body, its function and how it operates, its committee structures, and just the basic overall tasks that we'll be doing as members of counsel. With that being said, we are now going to go into, um, we have on the agenda there, I guess we have to do a roll call again or not?
Yes.
Okay, um, Judd, can we have a roll call?
Mr. Dilch. Mr. Dilch.
Here, here.
Mr. Olson.
Here.
Ms. Owen. Ms. Owen.
Mrs. Owen? Mrs. Owen?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Park?
Yes.
Present. Okay. Moving down the line here, I make a motion to open the meeting to the public. Is there a second?
I think you need to do the flag salute again, Mayor.
For real?
We now have a public.
Please rise for the flag salute.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Please keep in our prayers, our country specifically, that it can heal itself after this election that we have just all gone through.
Amen. We have just done roll call, I will make a motion to open the meeting to the public. Was there a second before?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, any opposed? Meeting is now open to the public. Mr. Lafferty, can you see who was waiting in?
Ms. Casser.
Mrs. Casser Brand, please come into our meeting.
Well, thank you very much and thank you for putting the code project on the agenda. Um, I'm very happy to report that we heard from Kathleen Macon, the general code senior editor, and they're ready to move forward with the final draft of our code.
All right.
That's very exciting. And I sent you all a really detailed list of people that I need to thank for what we've finally been able to report today. But I have never really thanked the city council code committee. The minute they were elected, they stepped up and really dove into this big project and their help with just paying attention to the details and the meetings we had has really meant a lot to me, so I've never really mentioned that. And then, as you can see from my report, there's a lot of old stars to go around because it was really a mutual effort. And again, though, they found only four things wrong that they had, not wrong, but that they had questions about. But again, I have to say one last time that that was because of the legal review and the quality of it, so it kind of screwed up what was on the original document and I'm grateful. So anyway, thanks to all of you for the opportunity and hopefully very efficiently and soon you'll have a paper copy to look at and an online copy and you'll see the fruits of all of your labor. So, thank you very much.
Mrs. Casser Brand, I have said to you at every one of the meetings, thank you, but I do run you in that I really mean what I'm saying. You have worked, I would love to know, did you ever really take, put it on paper how many hours you have in this? Did you have to keep a log of what you're doing?
Well, I, from the times and the weeks that I worked, about a thousand hours, I guess.
A thousand hours? Oh my God.
But you see, it was fun for me with the help I was getting, it was fun. So, I have to confess that and I'm glad it turned out well. It was like waiting for my report card grade and I got it, it's on its way, so.
We have a fund ordinance in which we charge so much per hour fund, just so you know that.
I'll pay up, I'll pay up.
Okay. You know that answer. Is there anyone, Judy, are you done?
I am, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else from the public?
I believe Mr. Pogue has raised his hand.
Go ahead, Mr. Pogue.
Uh, thank you. Two things. One would be, um, was anything actually decided then from the closed session? That was no? Okay. Um, okay. Uh, the other would be that I would ask, I'm gonna say this as respectfully as possible, uh, that you strongly consider, um, where you're going to be with that resolution 76. Just with the gifts and graces of the person who would be involved as well as the various situations that they have found themselves in, you're kind of putting the fox in charge of the hen house and that just may not be a satisfactory outcome for the city at this point. Is there a formal, is there anything going to be on the agenda about search for a new deputy clerk or where does that stand? That is why I asked. Well, so I guess you're not answering that question? Do you have anything else to say? I guess you've answered that question. Okay, um, no, thank you very much. Anyone else in the public?
Is there anyone else in the public that has a comment to state? Mr. Lafferty, can you see anyone else?
Uh, I see no one else much in there, I'm looking.
How many people in fact are in attendance to the meeting tonight? Are you able to see that?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, okay. Uh, I make a motion to close the meeting to the public. If there is no other person who wants to speak, is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Please say aye or nay if you're in favor.
Aye.
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 The ayes have it. Moving down the line here, we have the engineer's report. I, um, wanna bring Michael Trainger in, I don't have a engineer's report.
Mayor Chuck Trainger's here from Fort Mike.
Hey Chuck, long time no speak.
Good, good, I know, I think I got emailed in today, the engineer's report, so. Yeah. Mayor, I'll go through briefly, there's such a couple things, my mind will go over. Um, one is Fifth Avenue reconstruction, the plans are done and they're at pine lands. Soon as we receive approval, we'll be able to go out to bid for that project. And then, lastly, just waiting for, um, the 2021 project to come out. And the hope is, maybe we'll hear this month. There's no guarantee this month or next month, but keeping our fingers crossed.
And that's for the Maple Avenue project?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay, so, um, are there any outstanding issues pertaining to any of the current projects that we have that are ongoing?
No.
12th Avenue's been closed out, we're pretty much done with that, right? There's nothing else that needs to be done, there's no punch list?
That's correct, that's completed. And there's one remaining punch that's item, uh, for Mike at the municipal building. But Mike's working with the contractor on that, but everything's done except for that.
Okay, and Fifth Avenue project? I mean, we haven't, uh, really proceeded to put the road down yet, but where are the drains that have been approved that are, uh, potentially gone as adequate?
That's the pine lands right now, Mayor. Um, so Mike did all the design plans, everything's there right now. As soon as we receive approval, so he'll be checking them here shortly, but the plans are up there, they had them. Um, I imagine COVID things will be a little bit slower, but as soon as we have approval from them, uh, we'll be able to go out to bid.
Okay. The commission, they're not really meeting as a whole, they're doing their meetings like virtual, correct? Chuck, if I may ask?
I don't know that, I don't know.
I'm not real sure, I have heard that they're doing virtual, but some members, my understanding, do attend, some don't. Um, I guess the real question is, how are they handling applications?
Well, things still have to move along, so.
Such as our application?
Exactly, like I said, Mike says he will be calling up there just to check on it, make sure that everything's proceeding along, but, uh, but the hope is to have everything ready to go, been, you know, late winter, be ready to go for a spring project.
Is it safe to say that if we would have not had this COVID-19 problem, that that would have been out the bid by now? We've kind of been delayed with this one here, if you ask me.
That's, that's a tough.
This is moving rather very, very slowly.
Yeah, well, it's just, we normally don't have a pine land, usually with a road project, we don't have the permitting we have to go to such as pine lands. Normally, we do our design plan, state, B O T, and go right out the bid, so it's streamlined, but pine lands definitely does slow things up.
Yeah. This is for Fifth Avenue, yeah. If this would have just went smooth enough, I mean, that project should, they should have had asphalt laid by now.
And you will find into that problem.
Yeah, tell me about it. Chuck, do you have anything else that you wanna share with us?
I do not, Mayor, no, no.
Okay, and I guess everything that you sent over on your engineer's report, you just got done speaking of, which means it's a very abbreviated report.
That's correct, it's one four items on there, Mayor, that's correct, yes.
Okay, very good. Does counsel have any questions for the engineer? Does counsel have any questions for the engineer? At least respond whether yes or no.
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 Okay. And counsel can hear me clearly, correct?
We can.
Yes.
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 Moving down the line here, thanks Chuck, take care.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. We have the bill list, moving over to the next line item.
Mr. Mayor, I have a few things to add, but it's on my desk, so just give me a moment. I will be right back.
While Judd is on his way to go get his extra. We have some old billing here from Parker McKay and I think it's safe to say that we have paid an enormous amount of money and a whole lot more in legal expenses without getting into it. I don't see purposes why, I'm not in favor of paying this bill, I'm just not.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I can tell you that I received a call a day or so ago from Mr. Cerny requiring about the status of that bill and wanting to discuss it with someone from counsel.
Have him contact me, I would love to talk with him.
Okay.
I would love to talk with him.
I will do that.
All right, um, we have Dell Marketing, the three computers per quote, which computers are they? Does Technology Committee wanna shed light on that one? Matthew, perhaps, Mr. Olson?
They were the three new computers we ordered for the office.
For the office? Okay. They weren't laptops or anything, they were actually just desktop computers?
Desktops, yes.
Okay. And Mr. Olson, while I have you on here, um, there's something that I keep on seeing repeatedly over and over. We've been spending an enormous amount of money on Barber Consulting Services. Now we have $931. Where is there an M to this? Do you happen to know? I'm sure that since your short term that you've been on here, we've just repeated bills are horrible. My God.
Well, part of the money that you approved was for them to install the computers.
To install the computers? So this 900, um, this $931 fee is just to install the computers? That's it?
Don't be good at it because, uh, what's more than that?
Judd is going to get it. And then we have the very last one here for $12,500 to Dorothy Volunteer Fire Company. We've already made one payment, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so now this takes us up to $25,000.
Correct.
I will tell you that last year, um, we were paying $15,000. The year before, we were paying $10,000. We have had an astronomical jump in payment to to the volunteer fire company or the Dorothy Rescue Squad. We're paying them more money than we are our own people for our own fire company. I'm really wondering if this is an accurate bill that we're getting. I mean, Judd, have you actually looked to see how this billing is working? Like, have you seen the calls?
May I say something?
Excuse me?
May I say something?
Go ahead.
Some months ago, Chief Hand from Dorothy Volunteer Fire Company came inside before us and explained why the forward billing would be going to $25,000 a year as a product of their increased costs. Counsel voted and voted to pay them $25,000 in the current.
No, I'm just simply saying, like, how did it get to be? That it's just come from?
Not enough discussion though, Mayor, now's just the time to pay the bill. We said we would pay the bill, they provided the service, we needed the money, we need to pay the bill. The counsel voted.
You had a question on Barber Consulting. They were out here for computer services, uh, like a service call, $131.25. A wireless access point, uh, at the Public Works Garage, $124.99. Installed and configured a wireless access point in Public Works, I think that's for the internet. $112.50. To install the three new computers was $487.50. Their original estimate was around 600, so that was less. And then they had to get some V G A adapters for the PCs, $74.97. So that's what makes up the $931.21. And as far as the EMS, the reason why it's going up is because, I was talking to some firemen the other day, they went from 12-hour shift, now they're 24/7. And if you think that $25,000 is high, for anyone thinking about that, go out and try to contract with a hospital or something and have service in the town and what you will pay. If we ask, we couldn't even afford that. So, to me, I think that's very reasonable.
Somebody make a motion to pay the bills?
Uh, hold on, I have several to add, counsel. Because they just came in, I haven't had time to even put them on the bill list. So, let me please go over that. Since the bill that I give out on Friday, we have a Staples bill for printer, J F Wellness Items and Ink, $571.17. We have supplies and envelopes from Office Basics, $347.86. Jennifer Blumenthal for September, October, $3,262.50. P M D Poe Credit Supplies, $82.46. The Treasurer State of New Jersey for our annual site remediation fee, which is the layoff fill of $11,135. Gloucester County Fourth Quarter Dispatching of $2,551.57. Estill Manor Board of Education for November Levy of $216,928.59. Hardenberg Insurance Group for volunteer accident policy, $350. I have a bill here from Carl Trippikin Law Office for $400 for virtual court session of October the 30th. Rare Road Deli, we took care of meals for the election workers yesterday, $148.65. We have Casa Payroll for September, $114.69. Uh, I have a mileage bill that I had to go to Northfield on Monday to pick up the election items and that was, um, 69.5 miles from my house in Marstown, to Northfield, to here and back home. And it was federal rates, .575 times 69.5, which was $39. And I wanna say, I had it written in here, some change, 90 cents, I believe. And I just gave you that detail because it's involving myself. Uh, two items that we have to do, um, I have to ask you about. I talked with Jeff Cornell, who's dealing with the LOSAP, the length of service program for the firefighters that we pay each year. And because, uh, last year, we upped it to $771.40, I think it was like a 4% raise from the prior year. So, this year, uh, because it was $734.67 per person. Uh, so this year, everyone's getting the 2.5% raise, so I would like to propose that we do that to our firefighters. That's an additional $19.28 on top of the $771, which comes out to be eight, six, uh, it comes out to $790.68. We have eight firefighters that qualified, so the total additional cost to the city is $154,024. And if I multiply what the final bill would be, goes to Lincoln Financial. I was just presented this last evening, so if I multiply that out, LOSAP bill would be $790.68. It would be $6,325.44. Now?
Question about that?
Sure.
Okay, so there's, the biggest piece of that we're obligated to pay simply is a product of what we've resolved in the past and the fact that those eight people have served the year. This is right, we owe them that much.
Yes.
You wish to give a 2.5% raise going in within that? And what would be best would be if you just tell counsel what the total of that 2.5% raise is, because that's really all that's under consideration by us right now. The whole thing has already been, we already talked about that.
Well, you have to approve the payment because it's on the bill list.
But the only part of it that's news to us is that 2.5% difference.
Yes, that would be $154.24 for all eight firefighters.
Okay, not $154,000, $154.
You said it before, I'm thinking to myself.
Did I say that?
You did, I'm thinking to myself, boy, that's one hell of an increase.
Well, see, I'm sorry about that, but, you know, as being a fireman, I'm thinking about hiring some staff here, EMS, full-time firefighters, you know, but I'll hold back on that idea I have here. It will reduce it.
Just to clarify, the only part of that that's any news to us as counsel is $154, correct?
At 24 cents, yes.
At 24, okay.
Sorry to lift there.
For the record, I have no problem with an increase, that's a minimal, minimal amount. It's not even measurable, if you ask me, to each member, it's.
Okay, now, I wanted to ask Randy this, but I think I know the answer. Uh, some of these bills, I had to transfer money and in order to do that, there's a transfer resolution that has to be done. Budget transfers are done from November, December, January, February, March of each year. And so, if I may, and Randy, you concur, we should go and make a motion to pass 78-2020 Transfer Funds that I made to help pay some of these bills and then go ahead and, um, make a motion to give the LOSAP 2.5% raise and then finally vote on the bill list.
Judd, you are correct.
I make the motion on Resolution 78.
Resolution 78, we're not.
We have to, we're going down to that to pay the bills.
All right, you've made a motion, I'll second. We should have a roll call on this one here?
Yes, uh, Mr. Dilch?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Park?
Yes.
Mayor Venesia?
Yes.
And I think all we need really now is just a motion to give the extra money to the fire guys.
I make the necessary motion.
10% more on the LOSAP payment to each volunteer firefighter.
That's correct.
I make the necessary motion.
Second.
Second? Is there a second?
I think Mr. Dilch made the second.
Uh, roll call on this one here because we're extending.
Uh, Mr. Dilch?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Park?
Yes.
Mayor Venesia?
Yes.
And now we can have a motion on the bills.
And the motion is subject to the adoption of Resolution 78-2020.
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah.
At this time, I would like to, um, ask counsel to allow me first to speak to Parker McKay. But I would like to be able to hold these top two bill, on the, uh, these two line items on a bill list.
That's fine.
I would like to hold the 44.73 and the 23.50.
We invoice items 56 and 57, items number 56 and 57.
That's correct.
And if I just may, I, uh, we had these on the bill list several months ago, probably earlier in the year. And then we voted to take them off. The only reason that I put these bills back on for your consideration is that they reset me those bills this month. So, it's not me to withhold bills, I put them on the bill list and counsel will make a decision to pay it. But that's the reason I put it on is because they reset me those bills.
So, I make a motion to pay the bill list with the exception of the, uh, line items 56 and 57.
Second.
Who made the second?
Mr. Dilch.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
You're speaking like to the total?
Yes. Well, we, Mr. Moore's gonna have to give that because he's just rattled off a whole bunch of numbers that none of us are gonna block all that in.
I know, I'm gonna have to add them up, Mr. Dilch.
You can add that up now or what do you wanna do?
I was going, do you want me to add them up or do you just wanna take what I said and then I'll add them up and then give you the number?
I would prefer to do that rather than roll up the meeting.
Typically, we vote the total, I've never not done that, there must be some reason for it.
Just to move the meeting along.
Well, some casters just make a motion to pay all the bills, so it's your choice.
It can either be individually or in total. So, the bills are on the bill list and I gotta find.
Okay. Want to amend your motion, Mayor?
The motion being amended to that I'd make a motion to approve the bill list, uh, that is presented in front of us and also with the, uh, items that Mr. Moore spoke of as he spoke of them one by one. We don't have that total in front of us, but he is gonna be working on that. And that is also with the exception of line item 56 and 57.
I'll hold my second.
Um, if there's no further discussion, we need a roll call.
Mr. Dilch?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Parks?
Yes.
Mayor Venesia?
Yes. Okay, moving down the line here, we have, um, we have, um, the minutes, moving into that. Everybody's had a chance to take a look at the minutes, does anybody have any corrections or deletions? I actually in fact have one. On page six, because of the confusion. because of the confusion that was going on, um, going down to where it says the holiday parade, I believe that I voted yes on that, to have the holiday parade.
Okay, we'll make sure that's changed.
Okay, and there's another one. When I was talking about this pile of funding.